Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the March 23, 2021 Joint Meeting of the Glendale City Council and Glendale Housing Authority. Due to evolving situation with COVID-19 and health recommendations from LA County Health Department, the Glendale City Council meeting will be available to the public electronically. Due to social distancing requirements, the public will not be able to attend the meeting. This meeting can be viewed on Spectrum and Charter Cable Channel 6 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. You may also stream online through our website, www.glandelca.gov, by scrolling all the way to the bottom of the webpage and selecting "Live Streaming", which is the third icon from the left. For public comments and questions during the meeting, call 818-937-8100, which is on the screen. Please don't call in advance of the agenda either. May I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Brotman.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Kasakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Agajanian.
Present. Ms. Devine, for housing.
Roll call, please, for housing.
Authority member Aginian.
Here.
Agajanian.
Present.
Brotman.
Here.
Kasakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Authority member Parazian. Chair Devine.
Here.
Mayor Agajanian and Chair Devine, may we continue until we get Authority member Parazian back on?
Yes, let me catch up. Thank you. Next item, please.
The agenda for the Tuesday, March 23, 2021 Joint Public Meeting of the City Council and Housing Authority was posted on March 17, 2021, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next item, please.
One would be Community Services and Parks regarding acceptance of grant funds from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development for the 2020 Continuum of Care Program. A, City Council motion approving acceptance of grant funds in the amount of $2,735,430 from the Department of Housing, and urban development for the 2020 Continuum of Care Program, and authorizing the city manager or a designate to execute all agreements, certifications, and documents necessary to accept and implement the funds. B would be Housing Authority motion approving acceptance of grant funds in the amount of $2,735,430 from HUD for the 2020 COC program, and authorizing the executive director or designate to execute all agreements, certifications, and documents necessary to accept and implement the funds.
Thank you. City Manager, Mr. Golani.
Mayor, I have one more item. Resolution of appropriation to appropriate grant funds in the amount of $2,735,430 received from HUD for the 2020 COC program.
Thank you. City Manager, Mr. Golani.
Yes.
Congratulations, by the way.
Thank you.
This is the first, I guess, after decision last week.
Good afternoon, Mayor Agajanian, members of City Council, Chair Devine, members of Housing Authority. I'm just going to turn it over to Yvette Somvalian, Community Services Manager, to make the presentation on this item.
Good afternoon, Mayor Agajanian, City Council members, Chair Devine, members of Housing Authority. My name is Yvette Somvalian. I manage the homeless continuum of care for the city of Glendale. Today, before you, we have a report from Housing Urban Development with respect to acceptance of funds for the city of Glendale under the 2020 Notice of Funding Availability Competition for Use of Fiscal Year 2021/2022. With respect to our Glendale Continuum of Care programming, the city of Glendale has been receiving funding from HUD since 1993. In '96 was the first original funding that city received under the Continuum of Care. We, each year, are qualified for certain funding levels, and this year, under the 2020 competition, we are qualified to receive funding $2.73 million from HUD with respect to managing our homeless programs. Something new this year with respect to the funding from HUD because of COVID-19 pandemic, HUD made a decision to forego the national competition under the 2020 competition, and also to forego the 2021 Unsheltered Homeless Count, which is typically a national competition Glendale applies for every year with respect to receiving funding from Housing Urban Development. The fundamental components for the continuum of care and what HUD funds with this $2.7 million is permanent housing or permanent supportive housing for unsheltered homeless individuals, homeless families, or folks that are veterans and domestic violence subpopulations. Other programming funded through the continuum of care is rapid rehousing, short-term rental subsidy programs, street outreach, coordinated entry to the system, which is one point to service intake and assessment for our homeless individuals with the city of Glendale. And additionally, we are able to fund transitional housing programs. Ultimately, this particular unique funding is only targeted for housing-first approach, which means our outreach folks and case managers to reach out to the unsheltered on the streets and put them in housing, and then provide wraparound services with this type of funding. The fiscal impact of this project, the $2.7 million funding will be funding for one year of renewals of nine projects. The projects are listed here before you. The bulk of the funding is allocated for rental subsidy or leasing subsidy of our units that we partner with the landlords in the community in the city of Glendale to house our most chronically homeless individuals and families. Overall, with this $2.7 million, we provide housing to about 150 permanent units, about 50 to 75 rapid rehousing units administered through Family Promise and Essentia and Salvation Army for families who are recovering from substance abuse. The CES reallocation funding is the large funding under the federal government, and this particularly funds our homeless outreach teams in the city of Glendale, all of our itemized specialized case managers from mental health, substance abuse, employment, housing navigation, our mental health therapist at Essentia that does therapy for our clients. And then, in addition to cities responsible for the planning of the continuum of care, in addition to the HMIS program, the Homeless Management Information System, which is our system that provides and gathers the data and demographic reports for our unsheltered and sheltered programming. This does conclude my presentation for the report. I'm happy to take on any project. At this moment, staff is asking City Council to accept the grant funds and Housing Authority to also accept the grant funds and now allow city manager or designate to support with the executions of the contracts with the city and HUD and city of Glendale and our subrecipients. If there are any questions regarding this report, I'm happy to answer now.
Thank you, Mrs. Somvalian. Is there any question from Ms. Yvette Somvalian?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mayor.
Ms. Devine.
Thank you. I have two questions. The amount of funding for each project name is based on the renewal, I mean, is based on their original request for funding, right? There were no other factors that entered into how much each. For those that are watching and say, well, why didn't so-and-so get more money, and why didn't this other group get more money? Just to be sure that everyone understands how these sums were allocated.
Chair Devine, Mayor Agajanian, Housing Authority staff and council, yes, the particular allocation for this fiscal year was primarily basically a renewal for one year of funding to these agencies. These agencies received the same level of funding past year, last year, and because there was no national competition this year, they essentially had only renewed all of the existing programs and agencies with the same level of funding.
Thank you. And my second question is, if you can answer this, and I've been curious about this for at least a year now. When we changed over, when HUD changed their focus to housing first, you know, I was a little concerned. I thought, how is that going to work? Is that going to be successful? Can you tell me and those that are watching and my colleagues, is this process working better than the old process did?
Chair Devine, members of the Housing Authority, City Council, yes. So, housing first, what that means, and when HUD reprioritized their funding towards housing first, essentially means that our most vulnerable chronically homeless individuals who are severely mentally ill or substance abuse and drug abuse on the streets, they don't have means of transportation to come into our access center or our Essentia agency to do the intakes and process, assessment process. What we've done different and what has been successful with city of Glendale is that we send our outreach teams to where our clients are. And with that opportunity, we develop the rapport with them. We actually complete the housing forms, the applications. We coordinate landlords to have the units available so we're able to transition individuals or families quickly into permanent housing. The case management and wraparound services comes after they're placed. We don't ask them to keep clean, stop drinking, stop using, or, you know, you need to access resources, but that wraparound services comes after they're placed because it helps them to stabilize themselves in a home before, and then they can receive all the health services as needed. That has been significantly progressive in our city, and that's the reason why we did reduce homelessness in the city of Glendale in 2019 for our unsheltered population. And we were one of the only cities reducing unsheltered population because we continue to mobilize our housing-first approach.
Thank you, Ms. Somvalian. You do a great job, and I thank you for your service in that department. Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Agajanian?
Yes, Councilmember Brotman.
Yeah. I had a question, Yvette. Can you update us on what, if anything, was going on with Project Room Key? I'm sorry, not Room Key. I was thinking of Home Key, the one where we would potentially acquire, you know, motel space and use those for our programs. Are we looking actively at any, any, any projects?
Councilman Brotman, members of City Council and Housing Authority, yes. So, our department continues to work with State of California on second phase of Home Key funding to be able to look into opportunities with our economic development on the purchase of motels. At this moment, there is no additional funding for second phase, and so, at this moment, we still continue to coordinate with LSA, Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority, or County of LA, to be able to place some of our participants in their project Home Key programs. But we do and have been coordinating with Economic Development on a possibility of that project with our Continuum of Care.
So, there's no funding? I know there was a first round, and there was a really tight deadline, and, you know, we couldn't get in, we couldn't find an opportunity fast enough. You're saying that subsequent to that, there's been no new funding? I thought there was.
We are on the waiting list for the second phase of funding. We have reached out to State of California and informed them of our interest. So, once we have that availability of dollars for second phase, we will reach out to community development and housing for that opportunity and work with Economic Development. But at this moment, I don't have any additional details. We can come back with a report to council and get direction on that.
Okay, yeah, I'd be interested in that, and whether we're out scouting for potential, you know, motels that we could acquire so that if the funding comes down, we're able to act quickly. Because I think that was the problem, right? That it was just very hard to get, to get a deal negotiated in time to meet that funding requirement. But it'd be good if we could, you know, be ahead of that, right? And be poised, if the money comes down, to grab it.
Will do. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, I just, is there any other question from my colleagues? Okay. I just want to go to page five of the report, or seven of 29 of the report. Okay. Campaign disclosure. I had problem with this, of course, I know what it is, but others may look at it, and this looks, to me, it looks wrong, but anyway. It says, "Name and address, business address of the members of the Board of Directors, the chairperson, CEO, COO, CFO, subcontractors, and any person or entity with more than 10% interest." Then underneath, it says, "Officers of Essentia, Rights, Dickon, Ron Baker, whom I know, and there are few others that I know them." And these people, they do not owe 10%. So, I just want to somehow to be clear here, so we are not going to cause problems. Somebody else will look at this. They think that these people, they own something with, they have something to do with what we are doing here. Mr. Garcia?
Mr. Mayor, as you note, the campaign disclosure is related to any board member, so whether it's a nonprofit or for-profit, any of those interested individuals, or anybody that owns 10% or more of the entity. So, obviously, with the nonprofit, it's not applicable, and I think it's pretty well understood that that's, that provision doesn't apply to board members for nonprofits.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear. Thank you. All right.
I'll move the item for council.
All right.
Second.
1A to C, so. Oh, 1A and 1C, right. The other one is for.
A and C.
Okay. For 1A and 1C.
I seconded that.
Okay. Roll call, please, for 1A and 1C.
Councilmember Brotman.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
And Mayor Agajanian.
Yes. Ms. Devine.
Can I have a motion for 1B, please, from housing?
I'll move 1B for housing.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Authority member Aginian.
Yes.
Authority member Agajanian.
Yes.
Authority member Brotman.
Yes.
Authority member Kasakian.
Yes.
Authority member Najarian.
Yes.
Authority member Parazian.
Yes.
And Chair Devine.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item would be number two, Innovation Performance and Audit Regarding Proposed Ordinance Establishing Mayor Selection Process and Proposed Resolution Establishing Housing Authority Chair Selection Process. A, Introduction of Ordinance Amending Glendale Municipal Code, Section 2.04.020, Establishing Mayor Selection Process. B, Resolution Amending the Housing Authority Bylaws Establishing the Selection Process for Housing Authority Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Golani? Oh, Mr. Garcia. Okay. Here we go.
Mayor Agajanian, City Council, Chair Devine, members of the Housing Authority. In response to Councilmember Kasakian's request for a report to address options for establishing a formalized process for the selection of mayor, staff presented a report on January 12, 2021, outlining the research that they had conducted and provided options that included four methods. And at that meeting, council directed staff to bring back a proposed ordinance to codify the mayor selection.
Someone speak up. We're waiting for something. I hear you, Mr. Golani. Your microphone isn't working.
Right. I'll go over quickly, then. I was saying that in response to Councilman Kasakian's request to provide a report addressing options for establishing a formalized process for selection of mayor, on January 12, 2021, staff presented a report that outlined the research that they had conducted, and it included four different methods for the selection of mayor. At that meeting, council directed staff to bring back a proposed ordinance to codify the mayor selection procedures, as well as a, we have included a resolution for consideration for a process for the selection of the Housing Authority Chair as well. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Greg Caio, our Innovation Project Manager, to provide a presentation for you. That is basically the recap of the direction at the January 12, 2021 council's meeting. Greg?
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor Agajanian, Chair Devine, members of City Council and the Housing Authority. My name is Greg Caio. I'm the Innovation Project Manager for the city's Department of Innovation Performance and Audit. Today, I'm going to introduce you to a proposed ordinance and resolution that codifies new mayor selection and Housing Authority Chair selection methods in Glendale. So, let me share my PowerPoint really quickly. Can you see my slides?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so some quick background on today's item. The Department of Innovation Performance and Audit researched 134 cities across the United States, defined best practices for selection in council-appointed cities. This research was presented to Glendale City Council on January 12. Council directed staff to present a proposed ordinance to codify mayor selection procedures, prioritizing seniority of uninterrupted service since last serving as mayor, followed by highest collective votes received, followed by council consensus. Council also discussed having the Housing Authority Chair serve as the next mayor. Finally, council directed staff to codify an existing unwritten practice in which a council member cannot be mayor if they're up for a City Council reelection during their mayoral term. So, this flow chart outlines the general selection process for mayor. Council will meet on the first regular meeting after the first Monday in April. The eligibility for candidates will be determined, and then a mayor will be selected from eligible candidates based on the methods I'll introduce today, and then finally, a mayor will be selected. So, next, I'm going to break down the eligibility and the mayor selection processes in more detail. So, here, we're kind of zooming into that eligibility section, and during this process, certain criteria will determine which candidates are able to become mayor during the current cycle. So, these questions here will be asked. Will council members, will the council member's term expire at the same time as the mayor, or 180 days of the mayor selection? Are they the mayor at the time of selection? Are they unwilling or unable to serve? And are they temporarily appointed to City Council? Same yes to any of these, any of these questions would disqualify them from the current mayor selection process, and if they're able to answer no to these questions, then they'll continue forward into the actual mayor selection process. So, here, I've kind of blown up that mayor selection process. Based on council's direction, the primary criteria for mayor selection is the greatest seniority since last serving as mayor. The longer they've been out of the mayor's seat, the closer they are to the front of the line, if you go back to that zip line metaphor I gave in January. If two or more candidates have equal seniority, a provision exists to give priority to new council members who have not yet served as mayor during their current term. And then, highest collective votes received, whether as a flat count, if candidates are from the same election, or as a percentage of votes received, if they're from different election cycles, is in place to break ties that occur in seniority. And then, finally, we have a provision in place to allow council consensus to determine the mayor in the event that they deem that this might be necessary. So, whichever candidate can go through this entire process will be the mayor. A resolution amending the housing bylaws is also being proposed. This new language would specify that the Housing Authority Chair be determined based on who the next mayor is projected to be. So, this essentially would back in the future mayor into the current Housing Authority seat instead of trying to guarantee that there's a parallel Housing Authority Chair rotation occurring along with the mayor rotation. We went through a lot of different options, and we felt like this was the most elegant solution to guarantee. solution to guarantee that the right person becomes the chair before the mayor. And an alternative ordinance has been proposed that is not currently recommended by staff, and this codifies the transitional, the transition from Housing Authority Chair to mayor. But we can expect to see complications if we use this methodology that make it hard to follow under certain conditions that might come up in the future. So in closing, council, if council is agreeable to the proposed ordinance, this would become our flow chart for mayor selection. Thank you, and I'm available for any questions you have alongside our City Attorney's Office.
Is there any question?
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Najarian.
Thank you, Greg. If you can put your slides back up. It's the one with ABC on it, number four, I believe. Okay, so can you explain C? So someone cannot be mayor if their term expires at the same year as mayor. So do you mean fiscal year, term year, or calendar year?
I think it's calendar year, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Councilman Najarian. So it would be, it would be, you know, essentially someone who would be up for election next year in 2022 would not be able to be, for example, appointed mayor this, this year. Because their, their council term will expire at the same year as, as the mayoral term. That's, that's the intent.
Okay, so that's the point of being, that, that is addressing the advantage that you have as being mayor, running for council, correct?
Correct.
What if, what if the mayor is termed out? And what if the mayor's, or what if the mayor states unequivocally that this is his last hurrah, and he would not seek reelection? Do we deal with that in any manner? Would that be up to council's discretion then? Or would that be an automatic disqualification from running?
So it's not, it's not addressed. It, it is always within the council's discretion as to who to select. So as you know, there's a catchall in the event that there's some circumstance, and this could be one of those circumstances where the council wishes to deviate from the, the rules set forth in the ordinance. As far as term limits, that's actually not something we thought about, that, that probably could be written in there, that, that, that rule wouldn't apply if that, that particular council member is serving his or her third term under our charter provision for term limits.
Right, because there'd be no advantage.
Correct.
He wouldn't, you know, there'd be no election. So, okay. And then someone who is, let's say, some, okay, I got it. I got the 180. So that, that addresses that. Okay. And just to be clear, that if someone who is, let's say, second in line to be mayor, and, and thereby would be the likely chair of the Housing Authority, could, for whatever reason, decline the chairmanship, chair, chair of the housing position and still maintain his, his rotation, so to speak, to be mayor?
Correct.
That, as long as that's the way we're, we're understanding that. Because, you know, things come up, and, and I know I've, for one reason or another, you know, due to other obligations, whether it's, you know, personal business or other extra city membership, have said, you know what? I'm not really interested in housing chair. That wouldn't ding that person for the following year to be mayor. Okay. That answers my questions. Thank you.
Is there any other question? Okay, I guess apparently there is no other question. I have problem with this. And that is, this year was because of the extension of the time, they had extended almost a year. There is no problem. But generally, I just want to be on the record that previously, when there was four years, so usually, those who were in group of two candidates which would be select or elected, and then there will be three other council members after two years will be elected. So in generally, those who were being elected, one of those two would be mayor before election, like 2016. Like Ms. Devine was mayor, and 2017, there was election, and Vartan got elected. So he, his term extended from 2017 to 2018. So this group of two already became the mayor. There are three people for the following years, and we are saying that the person who would come forward for election, so obviously, among those three, group of three, so they can't be a mayor. The last one can't be a mayor. This has problem in it. And I just want to bring this up because, I mean, it's not going to impact us because of the extension of the time. But at a later time, people who would come here, possibly I won't be here, they would say, what kind of system is this? So I am group, in group of three is very, they have disadvantage of becoming a mayor. Am I clear what I'm talking about?
I, Mr. Mayor, I, I guess I understand. But again, the, the council directed this, this policy. We wrote it up the best we could so it'd be applicable to the most situations at hand. And, and probably in any piece of legislation, we cannot foreclose or particularly address every particular scenario. But again, this is, we are here following the council direction to provide this particular order of, of selecting the mayor.
I, I don't know if my, was it clear to others that what I was talking about? Those who are in group of three, they're in disadvantage in relation to those who would be elected. Two will be elected in certain years. They have, they're positioned better to become mayor than those who are in group of three will be elected. So they're going to have problem continuously, forever, whenever they are here.
The only thing I would say to that, Mr. Mayor, is that, that assumes that every council member is going to run for reelection in every election, and then all of those council members are always going to win those re-elections. And in my 16 years here, there's always been election, an election where either a council member has chosen not to run for reelection, or has resigned during their term, or has lost during their reelection. And as a result, I, it's usually been the case, somebody has always had the opportunity to serve as mayor within a reasonable amount of time.
But however, when you compare the group, those who are in group of two, they're better positioned than those who were in, regardless of what, than those who are in group of three getting involved with the election.
And I, I guess what I'm, what we're saying is, we probably can't, it would be very difficult to draft legislation to deal with that particular scenario. That would be as generally applicable as possible.
All right. Is there any other? Mr. Brottman?
No, I was, I didn't have a question. I was just going to say, I do understand what you're saying. I'm in the group of three, and I think that, you know, being mayor is not the be-all and end-all of life. And sometimes, somebody may get elected and serve out a term without being mayor and have to get reelected before they can become mayor. And that's, I think that's acceptable. It probably won't happen very often, as Mr. Garcia says. So I'm, I'm fine with how we have it structured right now.
On that note, there was a lady who passed away recently, which was a member of Glendale Police Foundation. He was here, he was not a mayor, and he was, I mean, I'm sorry, she, not, she was a member of Glendale Police Foundation. She passed away recently, and I forgot the name, but I ever...
Marianne Plumlee.
Yes. And I used to meet her in Glendale Police Foundation meeting, which I'm a member of for 20 years, even before I became a council member, and I'm still a member. And kind, she was bitter on this matter. So they can't tell me that everybody comes here is happy to be council member. And she was bitter, for the record. Anyway, is there any statement or comment in here? Okay.
No, I'll just say, Mr. Mayor, that I understand your concerns. My hope was in introducing or asking us all consider revising of this process, having witnessed in the past individuals getting skipped over, or however the process was done, to make the selections, to have something that minimizes the, the, I guess, bad feelings that may occur from, for instance, you brought up the example of Marianne Plumlee, a former council member. Or just in general, just to have this process be codified, written in such a way where there's a reasonable expectation of how things are going to proceed, so the public is aware, so that we're aware, and, you know, that it restores, you know, creates a process. And it doesn't, you know, minimizes the risk factor of individuals on the council speaking to each other and jockeying for a mayorship. I don't know what happened to my signal. You guys?
Yeah, we can hear you.
We can hear you.
And so, so, you know, I, I think that, you know, perhaps in the future, if we even take another bold step to create districts, which I hope we do, and that we, you know, expand this council to more seats like some of our other cities have done, we're going to have a completely different process. And I know Councilmember Najarian has advocated for an elected mayor, elected mayorship like Pasadena has. We may, this, that, in and of itself, will make this entire issue moot. So, you know, I, I would like to also see all of us and future councils get to a place where if there is a scenario like the one that you described, that out of a courtesy and out of this common decency towards one another, someone will step aside and give up their second term, turn, let's say, to be mayor, or whatever it is, to allow, you know, he or she who was last to be first. That is what I aspire to, for a more congenial, more positive, more kind relationships among the councils of today and the future.
Ms. Devine?
Yeah, I, I just want to say, when, when we reference Marianne Plumlee and her situation, if that was the case, that I didn't know that she ever wanted to be mayor. I didn't know the situation. But since you're saying that she was bitter, I think that's exactly the situation we're trying to avoid, that anyone is bitter because they were not, they were passed over, politics got involved, backdoor agreements were coming into play, and having a cut-and-dry procedure and ordinance that spells it all out, I think, is, is the way to prevent that from happening. So I'm, I'm in favor of the, the ordinance.
Thank you.
The support.
Is there any, is there any other comment or question? Okay. Roll call, please.
All right, if I may. So we have an ordinance, we have an ordinance for introduction, and then we have a resolution from the Housing, for the Housing Authority.
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Is there a second?
That doesn't need a second, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
And then we have the, the resolution for adoption for the Housing Authority.
Resolution for adoption?
I'll second it.
All right. Roll call.
Councilmember Brottman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Reluctantly, yes, for the record. Okay, what's next, please?
Next would be adjournment.
Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm sorry, before we adjourn, was that their one for housing as well that we had to adopt?
Yeah, we just did the resolution.
Yeah, that was the resolution.
Resolution for housing, correct? Okay.
Yeah, it was a Housing Authority resolution for housing.
Well, so was the Housing Authority resolution for housing? Why didn't Mr. Agajanian vote on it?
Right, should Housing...
Or Mr. Perazian?
Did you read the resolution?
We just read the council members, not the Housing Authority.
It was the Housing Authority. I apologize. Can you, can somebody make the motion and second it again? Thank you for catching that, Mr. Kusakian.
I'll make it for housing.
Is there a second? I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Second.
Roll call.
Authority member Agajanian?
Yes.
Agajanian?
Yes.
Brottman?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Perazian?
Yes.
Chair Devine?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn for housing?
Yep.
Second.
Move to adjourn for council.
Second.
Okay. That said, the meeting is adjourned at 2:46 PM. Thank you.